Okay, 4:31, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Just wondering, Tom, do we have any agenda changes?
No changes.
Great. There is no chair's report at this time. Do our members have anything to speak?
I know that it's on the agenda later about the public forum, but I just want to say what a great job that C.M. Martha did in pulling together the forum. Thank you.
Really good. Really good.
Great, we'll speak about that later. Any citizens wishing to speak at this time? And we'll move on to priority business with Mary Beth's report.
On the second page at the top, our after-school enrichment program. We only have two offerings for this session and the third session, and we're starting to think that the free after-school childcare program has impacted our ASEP program.
What's the ASEP?
The after-school enrichment program. So normally, we have four or five, perhaps six offerings, and we're only of two. So Sarah Tanner, who oversees that program, and with the help of Andy Sandoz, they were starting to see less and less children participating, and so that's their assumption, is that it's the ASAP program. And the other thing that I wanted to share with you is, at our last meeting, we discussed families who opt for the school choice program, the Massachusetts School Choice Program. And Mr. Conrad and I talked about getting together to try to get some information with those families who opt for that. So I have put together a letter along with a quick survey that was mailed out on February 15th, which was the Friday before vacation, and a self-addressed stand envelope went in the mail-in for people to send back if they were willing to do the questionnaire. So again, 11 went out, one came back. And the reason that they attend school choice in another district close by is because they lived in that town, so their two children were enrolled in that school. They have moved to Wellfleet and opted to keep their children at the school that they were familiar with. So I wanted you to share this with each of you. So that was my addition to my report.
Is this a problem that we should be discussing?
It was part of the conversation that we had at our last meeting about, you know, why do parents opt for the school choice program and go to neighboring schools as opposed to coming to Wellfleet where they're Wellfleet residents? So we were just gleaning, trying to get some information relative to the why. And at this point, with 11 families receiving these letters, we only got one response back.
And those 11 families are ones who were in the program and aren't anymore?
They're the families that live in Wellfleet, but they send their kids to another school instead of Wellfleet Elementary.
That's something I wanted to talk about later, but it's probably connected with the forum.
Any other comments on the survey?
It is actually something that came up a lot at the forum, people wanting to know why, if we could get the reasons why.
I do some conclusions about that.
Anything else about Mary Beth's reports that anybody would like to discuss? Clarifications? All right. Here we go to superintendent's report.
So thank you, Betsy. And the first piece I'd like to at least share with you is that I did once again follow up recently with the M. Broth, our town manager, on our financing for the collaborative program and so forth. Everything's a go. And he's on top of it. And so he's now looking, they're all looking at the town meetings, getting organized, and how and where they'll be requesting certain dollar amounts and so forth. But I'm very, very confident of this. Thank him a great deal. He's been a great partner for Wes.
Glad he stayed.
Likewise. So that's an important piece. The other thing I want to share with you, right now, what's happening out of my office is that we are now meeting with all kinds of boards. FinCon, FinCon boards, selectmen boards, and so forth. We'll be coming to the March 26th meeting with the selectmen here in Wellfleet. And I believe it's 6:30, but we can confirm that time once we see the agenda.
At the COA?
Yeah, at the COA. And so we're just, to this point, it's really been as much of a discussion about, it's interesting, many of the boards are interested to understand what are, what are some escalators in terms of costs that we can anticipate going forward, things like that. And quite honestly, for many of our programs, we're trying to monitor our special education needs and social-emotional needs as we go forward. And so it's been, it's been actually kind of a pleasurable process. Not so much getting into the leads in terms of, you know, why did you raise this $3 or not, but the bigger issues that, and the second one would be demographics. People are interested in demographics because there's been quite a bit of work being done by the superintendent's group on the Cape and interested in what we can reject going forward, things like that. And other than that, you know, we're out every night packing the boards and try to get budgets in line and see if we can't get this all set for Tommy here real quick.
Comments, questions? We have our budget review.
Yeah, so I have a meeting with C. Yvonne, and she assured me that she has reviewed our budget numbers on just two small changes. She would say that she's optimistic, although we lose one, we don't have money to throw around, as always. But she, we are tracking positively to the end. And she's thinking that the dollar amounts that are left here for Mary Beth can get us home and finish up in the blacks. That's what she wanted me to share with you.
Can anybody have any particular points about the budget they wanted to question? All right, so at this point, we need to discuss whether we choose to participate in school choice for the next academic year. Who's going to start that?
So I can start it if you don't mind.
Yep.
So this is a requirement in the state of Massachusetts. So you can wonder, why are we talking about this? Because everybody in the state is supposed to, by May 1st, indicate to Betsy what the, what the choice is going to be going forward. And so in a number of our districts, I think there's going to be some discussion about what they want to do. And as you know, currently, none of our elementary schools are involved in the choice program. Middle school is involved, and our high school is involved. And so what I can share with you is that we get information, and we're just giving you information to make the best decision possible, I suppose. And this is relative, this is a state report that comes out. It indicates to us in terms of what, and this is really, Mary Beth had seen this, and this is what she was reacting to in terms of understanding if students had stepped away from the program. On the backside, it's somewhat helpful to at least understand what it's talking about. And it's indicating that on the back, and I'm looking midway down through here, 02, that's the codes that we operate from to make some sense of this report. 02 is indicating to us school choice. So if it's an 02, when we flip this back over, that student is a school. Now, this isn't just the elementary, by the way. So this is, these are Wellfleet students.
I'm sorry, but I don't understand how to read this.
Okay, that's okay, Mo. So we're on the back sheet, and down about halfway down through, it's talking about 02 school choice, okay? That 02 is a code the state uses. Don't ask me why, but that's a code.
My question is the 17, what is that?
Right, that, those would be 17 students who have left to go to a different school.
Left Wes, left town?
Some are Wes, and some would be the middle school, and so forth.
So the entire region?
That's, yeah.
So it's also the Orleans elementary?
Exactly right. No, 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 this is just Wellfleet.
But it's not just Wellfleet Elementary School students?
That's right.
So it's Wellfleet high school and middle school kids?
Could be, yeah.
But could it be Orleans-type schools?
No. This is just Wellfleet.
And this is a list of students who left?
Yes.
Each one of these is a separate?
That's right. Each one of them is a student. And so we get this report for, to bring some clarity to it, for Orleans, for Eastham, and for Brewster. And everyone across the state has the same information in their communities if they wanted to see it. And so the issue that Mary Beth was talking about was trying, and kudos to her for trying to get some information about where there's some certain things, very similar. I read, and congratulations on the forum, I think it was excellent. A little bit of smell. And that's exactly what the forum is trying to do, is trying to pull out some thoughts that people are bringing that we want to hear and understand and go forward. And that's, so I thank her for that at this point. It's, the boards wish at some point to have some discussion about this, what they want to do. You're fully aware, you know it far better than I because I don't live quite this close, but you know that Turo and Providence Town participate in this program. And for different reasons, they have school choice at Turo Elementary, and they have it in the Providence Town school system.
And they're drawing some of our?
Yep.
I know it's later on, but it seems to fit with what we're doing now. But the impression I got in the forum was that people are not, kids are not going from Wellfleet, they're going to something else. In other words, they're not saying, oh, I don't like here, I gotta go elsewhere. They're saying, the others have something that Wellfleet Elementary doesn't have, and they named what they were.
So perhaps in terms of this discussion, where we're going to try to make a decision tonight about whether we choose or not, we're reframing that idea to, do we think others will choose us for whatever reasons? Used to live here and moved away, things like that. So anything else to add to this?
Thank you very much. So we've looked, Mary Beth and I have looked at this. You know, I like our class sizes. I mean, we've got classes of 16, 17, 18 students that we plan for next year. I think in Mary Beth's thinking, and she can certainly speak for herself, that grade one is an area that she would have potentially any interest in. And I believe she would at least entertain some discussion around whether, one, if you even want to get in the program, and two, you can identify what you want to do with the program. Only because the region has been added to, we're now picking numbers, but there's a good chance at the high school, we would be looking for 65 students in the choice program for incoming potential students. And they'll all be in the ninth grade. So that means at the high school, at the 10th grade, you can be the greatest student in the world, but if we don't open up a seat for you, you can't come. So at the 10th grade, the 11th grade, and the 12th grade, we're not taking students. Now, I'm giving you more information, probably this is going to get out to the region, but you know, on TV here. But in, I can tell that the middle school, we think we're full at seventh and eighth next year. And so we're only opening up two grades in the entire region. And that will be the sixth grade and the ninth grade. So you can choose where you would like to take in any potential students or not. And so that's your decision, if you want to make that. Mary Beth, I would be interested.
So when Mr. Conrad and I were talking about this, I said that our incoming K, we have the potential for 19. We currently have 17 confirmed, so we're just waiting on the last two. And I would be more apt to consider school choice for two or three children in grade one, and I would not want to go beyond that. And part of the reason is because of reading. And if we have children that come beyond first grade, and they haven't had a strong foundation in the five building blocks of literacy, that it would put an awful strain on our staffing and our interventionists. So if we can capture kids at a younger age during that development, I think that we have a lot to offer. And it would not put the strain on our interventionists, our reading interventionists. We are anticipating 97 students that are Wellfleet residents for next year, and that's why I say up to three, to get us to that 100 mark.
Aren't we allowed to limit it like that? You can limit, and you can determine, limit to the grade, too, right?
Yes.
And, Mo, just, I'm sorry, Betsy. And you would identify that you're opening up X amount of seats at a grade. And then it could be, in this case, if we set two students for the first grade next year, and only two applied, and then they get the seats. If eight apply, you would have a lottery. And a lottery, and you would pull two students out of the lottery to take those seats. Now, the region, just to give you a head, we haven't had to really go into the lottery all that much at the region level. We are going into the lottery next, this coming year as well.
Anne, did you have something to add?
Yes, speaking of limitation, the only limitation I know of in turn speaks to special ed. And we are not required to create a program for a child who moves into our school. That's the only limitation I know of. Because I deal with school choice at the middle and high school, obviously. So.
Mark, does something to add?
Thank you. Yes, so following that along and just thinking about what we've been facing right here with a student, would we be required to, for and out of Wellfleet students, send a child and pay for a child's placement elsewhere? No.
If it's a school choice student?
Yeah, I'm just clarifying now.
The regs, the special ed regs address that. So what would happen is, we would invite the sending school, so to speak, the home school. And we talk about, well, maybe they have a program for the student. And what I've said to parents is, you know, you chose our school, and we don't have the program. So, you know, you need to go back to your own school to see if they can develop something. And a lot of times, the school districts have been more than willing, you know, of course, to meet with the parents and see what they can create together, or for a not a district placement.
And then can have a conversation so they understand our program or limitations to our program.
So an incoming student from another district would not require us, we would not be required to pay a tuition, say, if they're collaborative or down the line, the student is it. That's what I'm checking.
If the parent doesn't enroll that student into the home school, then yes. However, however, there's a formula where we would get reimbursed for that cost. Just like a circuit breaker formula, we'd get reimbursed. There's a school choice formula. Now, the things that we don't get reimbursed 100% is if the child needed a one-to-one educational assistant. You don't get reimbursed for the benefits. It's, there's a formula, like, they'll tell us, you can charge X amount of money, and that's it. It's a flat fee, just like circuit breaker.
But if a child needs one-to-one, can't we say no? Or are we saying we can't say no?
Well, it depends, you know.
We don't want to?
We could say, well, you know, we can't create this program for the student. It's.
So I think the other way to look at it is that our budget has been passed, and we have X amount of staff and programming. And that would be the conversation that Anne or Anne and I would have with the parent. And they certainly understand the situation. They, we have certain programs in every school that are a benefit to some students, and some that we don't meet the needs coming in. We just need to understand that. That's not a priority for us, or that's not an area that we have invested into at this point. So, you know, there's a good discussion always in these situations, understand. Because parents don't know. I mean, if you're not in this school, or you're not in any school, you don't really know the actual operation of it until you have these conversations. And there are students, quite honestly, who aren't involved in the special education program, who need to have this same discussion. Because it might not be, they think coming into it, it might be the right fit for them. But after having a sit-down conversation with a guidance counselor or a principal or others, you know, so it's not a done deal just because you get accepted that you wind up at that school, special ed-wise or regular ed-wise.
So it sounds like it's a little bit of a collaborative, well, discussion between the person who applies to get it and the school itself. I would just be willing, wanting to hear a little bit, Mary Beth, of what you're thinking in terms of our special ed program that we have, Ms. Leather. And if indeed, one of the students that applied was correct, you know, right for that, what are the numbers? Like, do we limit space within that? Because that's a first grade, how does that work?
I can answer that.
Anne will answer that.
Because I deal with this all the time. No, the seat is according to general ed.
Okay.
Not what you have in a substantially separate classroom.
Okay.
So the other thing that could happen, but probably won't, if we accept a student who is, we have had situations, let me put it this way, we've had situations where we have a four-year age limit in a group. So if we had a student, you know, down the road who came in at kindergarten low, and Mrs. Leather's class is composed of fifth grade, then you'd have that four-year educational gap. So we have to deal with that. Because we're not accepting this, we have to deal with that.
Sorry to interrupt you. You're not talking in that context about a school choice student. You're talking about a Wellfleet resident that came in, and we had a gap.
No, school choice to.
So a school choice student.
Down the road. And I don't think this would happen with first grade if that's where you're opening. Because our class doesn't have a four-year age span.
Next year, we will. So next year, we will have two classrooms that Ms. Leather will be the teacher of. Oversteering programs.
Two groups?
More questions?
I don't understand what you mean by a four-year age. What are we talking about? Four-year age gap?
Betsy doesn't allow children to be in the same instructional space in the same classroom if they're over four years of age difference apart.
Why would there be?
Because if there's a kindergarten or a fifth grader in Ms. Leather's substantially separate classroom.
Oh, that one, oh.
Yes, yes.
Any further discussion before we kind of get a pulse?
I'm glad we're having this discussion, and I'm glad that if we do it, we're taking little baby steps. I recall a long time ago, Orleans opted for school choice, and then they decided not to. And I'm not clear, I don't recall, what made them decide not to do it anymore? Does anybody have this historical memory?
I don't. I've heard the same, but I think the board has changed since that period of time, so I can't really speak to that.
Just curious.
We actually had, Eastham took a student a year ago, opened a seat up for a student. And it was a unique situation, but it was actually a student came from Madrid. He was a fluent Spanish speaker. And the goal, the hope of that was that he would actually go to the high school because he was so advanced with his language. That's the one I know.
Anne, do you remember?
I know, I can't say for sure, but I, there was a cost to some of the kids that came in.
There was a what?
Cost, money, more money it would cost. It's my Rhode Island accent, I don't know how else to say it. I'll translate.
We have some force here.
And just two more things. Point of clarification, so I know this gets renewed year to year, right? So if we decide it's not working for Wellfleet, we can always renovate it, or, yes. Okay, that was one clarification. And the other clarification is, I heard you say that by May 1st, we have to make a decision. So we, I mean, perhaps we're ready now, but we, but there's, we could vote on it now, or if more people need time, we could, well, actually, I'm not going to be here. I don't think you will either. So anyway, we have a choice to vote on it at this meeting or next meeting, right?
I'm ready to vote on it. But I want more discussion, but I'm ready to vote on it.
I would like to say something. I have been for school choice. My concerns, of course, were the costs, not just the financial, but oftentimes, kids who come from, move from one district, the parents are seeking a geographical solution to something that really is not a geographical solution, I guess is the best way to say it. But sometimes, kids are not working out, not having a positive experience in a school, and there's a reason for that. And to put more pressure on the staff here seems unfair. On the other hand, I'm very concerned about enrollment, and very concerned about keeping the school going, which was the reason that we decided to run that forum. And I am tempted now to say, I personally would like to put off that decision by voting no right now, and having more time to go over the forum, to spend some time thinking about what the strategic planning committee has come up with in terms of what things are going to look like here in the next five years, and really have another year to think about it.
Oh, another year? Is that what you said?
Yeah, to really, if we say no now, nothing bad is going to happen. If we say yes, do you know what I mean? We're not really going to lose very much. If we say no to school choice right now, then I feel as though we're not going to lose anything at this point in history. That it's something we should really think very seriously about, and maybe more than a meeting or two, but really look at the data, look at what other people are saying, what the stakeholders are saying and have said. And have time for, even to know more about what the staff here feels and what Mary Beth feels. And spend a little more time reflecting. That's what I'm feeling right now.
Jill, what, do you want to say what you're feeling? We'll just pulse the, get a, what's going on for you.
You know, I'm open, I understand. That's why I had the threat of, if we did it for one year, and we decided it wasn't working, for whatever reasons. It's a renewable choice every year. So quite frankly, I mean, I could be persuaded, either way, I see pros and cons. So sorry, I'm not.
Mo, what's your feeling?
The, I'm in favor. I'd rather vote today. But because of the enrollment question, our enrollment, and the other, what Mary Beth said, that you could limit it to two or three at first grade, I think it would be great for us.
And so then I'll weigh in. I would be leaning also towards a yes vote on this today with a limit of two or three students. Speaking to your concern, Martha, I would think that Wes would help a student who hasn't had a good experience somewhere else. The school is pretty amazing, low class size, which will be kept intact.
Wonderful, wonderful.
With a staff that's already used to doing its best for every child, having, you know, one book, one school, like, a lot of extra initiatives out there that engage family and children. So that would just be mine. But we certainly could put a motion on the table, and we could vote, and. But we certainly could put a motion on the table, and we could vote, and perhaps, if it's not going to pass, then we could postpone it to another. Would that be legal? What could we do? If it didn't pass, I guess it just didn't pass, right?
It wouldn't pass in this meeting, we have one more meeting in May, it could be reconsidered at that time, but you'd have to vote to reconsider the vote at some point.
Okay, so I guess we need to decide first, like, do we want to wait a month and reconsider, or do we want to try to vote it now?
My preference is to vote now.
I think the yes vote would have it anyway. And I could be easily convinced. I am so ambivalent, I have two minds. The only thing that I can add to what I said is, listening to Jill, one of the things that I thought of is, if we say yes to two or three students, and then after a year, say no, what happens to those two?
We don't lose those.
Can we hear from Tom on that?
So, I just want to, thank you, because this, we want to be clear on this. And I think it's, it will be my recommendation, just to be clear, you're going to identify a number, it would be two students. Keep it, let's just start real slow with this, if we're going to go into it. But those two students who come in under the choice program would have a seat in the school, as long as they want to stay here, okay? So that we understand that much. And the dollar amount, I think we all understand it, but it's a little over $5,000 a student, in terms of, we would anticipate getting back from a funding standpoint. So, it would be, you know, $10,000, maybe $500 or something, for two students to come here. The interesting piece about the choice is, and again, I've been at choice for 25 years, good, bad, or different, is that at some point, it really doesn't cost the system any money. And that's the argument sometimes with the region, is that when you have 300-plus students coming in, you have to add teachers, you have to add transportation, you have to buy books, and things like that. In our case, I think it's safe to say, and correct me if I'm wrong, by adding two students, I don't think Wes is taking on any additional cost of that. We have room in it. We want to add staff, we want to add books, things like that. So, just so it's all in clear.
Could I ask a question? What about, is the parent responsible for transportation?
Okay, so then I need to say something else to consider our tardies and our absences, then, does that generally play a role when students are choicing in?
So, generally, well, my track record with it is, that this is a big choice for a family. You know, in many cases, they might know a number of friends in the community that they potentially are coming from. They have a pretty strong resolve to do it right, because they want to be here, a little bit more than the average student. Most kids who live in a community, they don't have a choice, unless you have school choice, yeah, that's the school I'm going to. Here, they're choosing Wes for some reason. And so, I found that that's always better with the choice kids than the regular kids, quite honestly.
And do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to adopt the school choice program with the limits we've talked about, two students at first grade.
All in favor?
It changes the order here.
That was nice discussion.
Good, yes.
Preschool update. Hi, Joanna.
Hello. Come on in. Okay, thank you. Turn this, because nobody...
Thanks a huge...
So, I, yeah, you had some questions.
Yes.
And we have some answers, I think. I'll, I can talk a little bit about some of the information I found, and then, did you want to talk about...
And should we just refresh that this is to do with Nancy O'Connell's and that program moving to the Eastham location?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, Tom?
I just, I just, thank you, before we even get started.
Sure.
I just want the board to realize that this is a region program.
Yes.
Okay. This is a, this is a region piece.
Yes, this is not a Wellfleet Elementary School preschool.
That's right, okay, I thank you all, I'm just, just to be clear.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, I did a couple of activities, just to kind of get the pulse of some of our families, and how they felt about this potential change. And so, I did send a letter home to all of the preschool students in Nancy's class, both afternoon and morning, and talked to them about that we're considering a possible move, and invited them to contact the program with any questions or concerns. And I didn't hear from any, any family. So, it's just one piece of information. A little bit later, just about a week ago, I surveyed the community friends in her morning program. So, those would be community friends that would, next year, be in her afternoon program. And my interest was, if we moved the classroom, would they still be interested in coming to Teacher Nancy's classroom in Eastham? So, the first, I, out of the six students, I had five returned. So, the first question was, next year, I plan to send my child to Teacher Nancy's classroom, if it's located at Wes. Four families said yes, and one was undecided. Then the next question I asked is, if Teacher Nancy's classroom were to move to Eastham Elementary, I would plan to send my child to one of the two preschool classrooms located at Eastham Elementary. And again, four said yes, and one was undecided. There were a couple comments, and they had to do with transportation concerns. I think one family had some older siblings that attend Eastham Elementary, or Wellfleet Elementary, and it would be difficult to pick up our students at 2:00 for that reason. So, and then, just the other little bit of information was that we had an open house last week, and that's an open house for our, again, community friends for next year, new families. And in Wellfleet, we had two families that showed, came to our open house, and we asked them, you know, considering a possible move, would you still be interested in the program were it to be in Eastham? And they both said that they would. And then we had five families attending the Eastham open house, and 17 families attending the Stony Brook open house. So, that was a little higher than, Stony Brook's always been the highest, but not quite weighted that heavily. So, that's just, just some information about the pulse of the people that I could get in contact with.
So, just a point of clarification, when Teacher Nancy's classroom gets moved to Eastham, then there's two classrooms.
Right.
So, if I want my child to go there, I don't necessarily know that I'm getting Teacher Nancy as the teacher, like it is here.
Yes, that's why I asked it that way.
You asked it that way.
Yeah.
Do you think it was clear to people?
I, I, I hope so.
Yeah.
However, and I don't want to speak for Teacher Nancy, but if she were to move, I would hope that the community friends that are in her class would stay in her class, going to Eastham.
Going to the next session.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Did you just say, if Nancy would move?
If the move were to happen.
If the move, okay. You don't mean Nancy might not move, you mean the group, the class?
The classroom, right, right. And...
Actually...
Yes.
Sorry.
I'm not used to being in charge.
Actually, Nancy's really looking forward and wanting this opportunity.
So, Tom, are we voting on this tonight, possibly? Just continuing a discussion?
So, we're just keeping you...
And do we have a vote on this? This really is not our decision, is it?
No, it isn't.
It's a district, it's a district decision.
But we certainly want to have a robust conversation.
It's a regional decision, yeah. Okay, so...
I think Anne's point is enough for me, anyway.
Okay. Did anybody have any other questions or comments that they wanted to, as we realize what this means for us, I guess? Yes?
I know you were asking the committee, but the other thing you wanted us to look into was the cost, there's that word again, of transportation.
Costs.
Costs. I checked, I checked with Paul Hilton, I checked with Giovanna, the 3% increase in transportation will cover the cost. So, there won't be extra expense.
The cost of transporting the special ed kids to Eastham.
So, Martha, you weren't here last time, I believe. Were you? Okay, so you were here when we discussed this, okay. Questions?
How do the parents, how do the kids get there? Do we transport them, or the family?
The community friends, the parents transport, have always transported the kids.
So, how would that raise the cost?
Especially on children getting transportation.
Well, thank you for the information, the idea's settling in. So, we then have an empty, another space available to us. Any thoughts on that? I'm sure you have.
Yeah.
Is there a part where it's going to come up, or do we table this for now?
I'm happy to tell you what a thought is, if you'd like, but...
We're all ears.
It's attached to the discussion, I believe.
Well, we do want this building to have a community feel to it, and to be utilized more, especially in the evenings and on the weekends. And I would like to welcome the recreation department to have that space as their office, so they would be in the building.
It would fit with some things on the forum.
Okay. All right, so let's move on to the forum, shall we? Thank you, Joanna.
You're welcome.
Very much.
This is the forum from the town forum. Those are the...
That's the preschool question, yeah.
I brought this to the day here, but they're, they stick together, it's not...
Yeah.
I was in bed for two weeks, but I tied all the notes, and you have them in front of you. The forum went well. My regret is that the weather forecast we were getting, really up to the minute, was saying one to three inches of mess, but not really bad enough to cancel it. I never want your dog, ever. Now, I think every time it looks like it's going to snow, I'm, poor Tom. We decided to hold it, because my fear was, we could cancel it, we'd get a little bit of snow in the following snow date, would, we'd have a blizzard. So, I thought, we all thought, let's just do it. It was a pleasure to work with Betsy, and I thanked Jill for her help on the day of, she really jumped in with two feet, was a great time, and a great facilitator with us.
Yeah, the timing was fine.
Yeah, it was good, I never would have been able to have that. We had, I would say, about 20 people.
I can report on the attendance, sure. So, 16 people and us.
It counted me, Jan.
No, I counted you as a participant. So, we had 11 parents, we had three committee members, so it would have been Jan and Martha from the school committee participating, and then we had our librarian. We had one person from the newspaper, and we had one Wes teacher, who was Kathy Ferry. So, to me, on a snowy day, we got some people who really cared. And so, I feel like what, the information that then I'm going to have Martha sort of, because you've dissected it, and lead us through, I feel like these are from the commit, you know, from a small group of people, but very committed and passionate. So, we'll have a place to start, I think, to move on. So, I'm going to turn it over, sorry. I will turn it over to Martha to just sort of give the outline of the comments, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
What we have on the, I hope, on the very most page, is a... This should have been here.
Forget the last page, this is about strategic planning, I don't know how it's ever here, I guess, I have lots of papers. Here that. The things, I guess, I included that in the email, and didn't include it on this tight version, but the things that really came out strong, and you all have it in your email, from what I remember, things that were repeated, a lot of, several people wanted to know, several groups wanted to know why people leave Wellfleet in terms of school choice. So, it was wonderful that you did that survey, and unfortunate that only one person responded. If I may?
Yes.
All except two of the 11 families, I have never met those families, so those children did not come to Wellfleet and leave Wellfleet, they never came. Only two have. Nothing important, you should...
That's important, yeah. That's good. They didn't leave.
They didn't leave.
They just didn't.
They never came, yeah.
But that's a question, Jill, as to why that is. Sorry.
There was a lot of discussion about vouchers versus preschool. A lot of people were asking about vouchers for younger kids on the same forum, under the preschool question, which I believe is...
Question?
Yeah, it's one, right on the front. As you can see, there are two different opinions, expanding the vouchers to three-year-olds, and then some conversation about universal pre-K. Some people, and it showed up on a couple of lists of questions and brainstorming, some people talked about preschool, a universal preschool is something we really should have. A lot of people talked about it with concerns, for example, we're concerned about universal pre-K, killing the excellent preschools we have. And they like the choice with differences in learning, being able to choose the preschool that works best for their child. Other people said preschool should be included as a formal grade. Those were big things that happened all over. More collaboration in terms of the community came up quite a bit. More different kinds of things that recreation could offer here in the school and out in the community came up. A lot of talk about the Turo school system, and looking at that, and finding out what it is they're offering. And then, for me, the most important piece was about the school, and learning about further advancing meeting, whole child center learning. And I think that one of the things that's really interesting about that is, is we've talked about advancing what's already there. I mean, there's so much there that's good, but it's a conversation we've had here with Tom, and we just had it today, talking about what can we offer if we're offering school choice? We want kids to really want to be here, and we want the kids who are here to really want to stay, and how can we make that really happen? So, things that came up were the IB program, and figuring out ways to get around some of the state mandated programs, offering foreign language at an earlier age, and something that is paid for by the school system. So, there were a lot of really, really creative ideas that were, that were brought out. I can't tell you how many people wanted an indoor pool here at Wes, and that has come up in the strategic planning meeting as well. Another big issue, another really big issue that came up often, and on these sheets, and had little sticky...
With a sidewalk cafe right next to the pool.
Now, that has to go with the library.
Oh.
But that would be good. But also, the interesting things that I saw, and the thing that I find really compelling is one of the biggest issues out here, and out here on the outer Cape, and why, what makes this district so different from other districts around the state? What makes Mossit different, or any of the Cape Cod districts? Is that we don't have housing, and we don't have jobs for people, and that's why it's so hard to keep young families. And that came out over and over again, especially on how we can work to support families, but it came out elsewhere. So, that's, that's what's here, the ideas are great, and I think it would be fun for us at some point, maybe as a homework, to go through this and put checks near the ideas that we, as a school committee, think are really compelling, too.
Yes.
The, what I, that there, I heard no criticism of this school. What I heard was that Turo and Providence have things that the parents want, and that's why they're sending their kid. I mean, these are, they have kids in the school, but they like those other programs. There's one in Providence town called a Winter Wednesday, why don't we have it here? I don't know what it is.
Winter Wednesday, if you don't mind, that's a, is an evening adult, sort of a adult education programs that they have on Wednesdays, it's not student-based.
It's not student-based. But again, you know, if the rec is housed here, what more can we do in the evening for our community?
And they, one parent said, "We don't have to compete with it for Providence Towns. We could do it on a different night." The other thing was, something in Turo, Turo has a summer program that they, well, I don't know what it is.
It's the recreational program.
And they said, "We don't have it here. We send our kids to..."
But that's not about the school.
And that's a full-time, a full-day program where our rec is more of a part-time. It's not a full-day summer rec program. There are a few extra hours at the Turo rec program in the summer.
But anyway, this is the reason that they, what they said, "We like sending our kids to Turo and Providence Town because these things aren't here." In other words, no negatives. It's just others have positives.
Jill, anything to add?
I like Martha's idea of us, you know, checking off what really resonates. Just a couple of random thoughts. Because of the unfortunate weather, I do know that a lot of stakeholders wish they could be there and weren't. I don't think we're gonna make a decision tonight, but I just wanna throw out the thought of these wonderful questions and opportunities for those who could not attend to continue adding thoughts.
We made it very clear that this was the beginning of a process. What I didn't say, I decided not to say at the forum, is that the strategic planning meeting, that's a report I'll have to give, too, is really gonna come back, we're all, we're gonna come back to our communities and do, if not a forum, I hope not another forum. But if we have to do a forum, then we will. But somehow get information from stakeholders. That's very similar to this information in terms of the kinds of things we're looking forward to find out so we can really get stakeholders involved in the strategic planning process.
Well, back to the forum. Okay, so back to the five questions. I was just thinking of maybe something that can be left at the senior center, something that can be left at libraries, where people can return to the school. So some of the stakeholders that weren't represented or, and some of them that were, can easily and soon, you know, feed into this. I know that there was some frustration of people who wanted so badly to be here and couldn't. So that's one thought, just for maybe paper surveys or something, and email surveys, maybe. Again, I'm just randomly thinking about a way people can weigh in before strategic plan or whatever. And that also brings me to another thought and question. I know it came up at the forum. I think we need to decide as a committee, if somebody wants to give us feedback or comments besides citizen speak. So if somebody did wanna send some comments or thoughts and, for whatever reasons, didn't choose to be here, to decide on either an email address or an, or an address. I know that, Martha, you very generously offered your email address for people to get further stuff. And I'm just wondering whether we should get a consensus of, you know, if people wanna send something to the school. I know in the past, sometimes it's gone to the chair. And again, I have no strong feelings. I just feel like we should maybe decide on...
Even if we had a box at town hall, a lot of the town committees do.
Yeah, yeah. Or COA when they...
Or even to send them here.
Yeah.
There was a group of people that were talking about technology and can't find it on here right now. But it was a means of sort of communication and losing what it was. But I think that to move forward, let's take some of these ideas and maybe we can start to put them into action. I had thought, similarly to what we talked about in terms of maybe if we take some time to read and check off some things that are worthy of future discussion, that then it might become, you know, an agenda item, which then is posted and people can see like, oh, it's the preschool. Or, oh, we're talking about child cent, how to advance child-centered learning. You know, we're opening up some of these bigger ideas for some public speak. And that way, they could either member speak or they could, I believe, ask questions or make comments, maybe not ask questions during that part of the meeting. That was what I thought of. Again, you can just write down some of these ideas and see how they move forward.
The technology thing that I saw was about the website, actually.
Okay.
A better website, better web presence to celebrate the school. But I'm not seeing it here. But I have had parents say there needs to be more information on the website. We need more. Maybe it needs to be more interactive or some way. I don't, I don't really know what they meant. But that would be a good...
So again, that could be a topic. You know, where we could get input and see...
It's interesting in connection with that.
Oh, here it is.
The better website, web presence. And the next part is, it's an amazing school.
Yeah.
So any final thoughts from anybody? Yes.
I think this is a great beginning. And Boyd needs to, needs to consider how much more it wants to reach out and gather more information. And then I think that's, once you're comfortable that you've got a good cross sample of your community, then I think you narrow it down the way you want it to go.
Yeah.
And I think that's, so it's starting big and narrowing it down at some point. So there are multiple ways. And we can help you with some technology pieces if you would like. Social office, or whatever things we do with the system. It's a great beginning. And I sense, quite honestly, there's a purpose to this. And I'm surprised that we did a lot of vision work, like, 10 years ago. Some of it is stuff that we're talking about today that we're just kind of sitting here. I sense this board wants to do something with this. And I applaud you for that. Don't ask a question if you don't wanna hear the answer, right?
So I think maybe just to solidify that idea, I don't think we got a good cross-section from everybody. And so next steps is, Martha, do you wanna meet? Do you want, should we just make a, like, right now, just say we have the questions? And we could email them or place them at different places? Do we wanna discuss that now or is that...
Whatever you'd like to do or if you can bring this back.
Should we meet again to decide? Because I do think that's our next step, is really to kind of try to gather the more voices, the people that couldn't make it that day. I don't really think we should do anything before that.
You know, I know you want a bigger cross-section. But I felt the people who were there are committed to Wellfleet Elementary School. And so I don't feel bad that fewer people would be there. I don't feel bad that we had a smaller group.
I think it was a wonderful, but I do feel that people who wanted to come, who were not comfortable driving in those conditions, did not come.
I, I do wanna say two things. I want us to address Mort's concern. And Mort, thank you for saying that. I feel that it's very, very important that the people who may not support the school in the same way that the parents do, in the same way that we do, come and feel that they've been listened to and give us a chance to respond to them in a way that's meaningful. Because they are the voters and they're the taxpayers. And it's important to get them, to really let them see and think about some of the things we have to say. And I think we need to listen to them as well, of course.
Mary Beth.
Some of the things, just rusing through, I don't think people realize that we do have what they're saying that we need to have. So I don't know if it would in any way help to provide you my goals, accomplishments, and priorities that is put in the annual town report. Because that really encapsulates a lot of the uniqueness. What I did with that document is pull out some things for this letter that went out to families that they didn't realize, some of the unique programming that we have. So I just feel like we need to give people the information, remind them we gave them the information, and then tell them again that we gave them the information. Because some of the thing, I'm like, we do that. We do that, you know?
Right.
So to be able to sort of front-load it with, you know, please read through what we currently have in place so that we can now get more creative ideas that people might have. I think it just helps to get everything highly focused.
I think so, too.
I think like many of us, we all have to get better at tuter, tuting our own horn. Try to say that with a Rhode Island accent. We really, really, we really need to get a better... Let people know. I know your backpack mail does it, but somehow...
If we do a weekly submission to the paper. So that's in there. And, you know, I put my heart and soul into every annual report. I just don't know if people open that book to read it. You know, the monthly newsletter. I try to change the pictures up on the website, you know, and put sort of spotlight things there. We can certainly improve. I just don't wanna be redoing efforts for people that, when we already have it. So how can we highlight what we do that's unique? So they can think of other things.
So I know you had your hand up. Would you like, did you have an idea you needed to?
Yes. I just heard you say that you do submit something to the paper every week. I know sometimes there's a picture of children dressed up, something they made. But I'm wondering, maybe, you know, it was delightful to see Ed Miller there. You know, a reporter who was so engaged, too, in discussions. You know, perhaps it might be worthwhile every once in a while to submit something to Ed. You know, a fuller thing of what we're doing at Wellfleet and not just a picture of children in costumes or something. I have a feeling that, and actually, it helps him, you know? Less work to do another report. So just a thought. And I'm wondering, do we have, I know we have a website. Do we have a Facebook piece?
No, the PTA does.
The PTA does. But I know that Nauset has a Facebook.
Some, some, some of them are specific to certain groups.
Right.
Doing it and tweeting. There's a number of social media pieces that we could consider.
Right. I was just wondering whether it might be worthwhile to piggyback on Nauset. You know, just for information about what we do and we're so proud of it. And I'm wondering, too, just interrelationships, because I know the high school also has various after-school clubs or even classes that deal with journalism and reporting. It might be a nice project for some high school students, too. For, talk about project-based learning and civics. And, you know, I feel like all this can be very interrelated and beneficial for everyone.
I, to piggyback on your comments and all great ideas, video. This is, this, tonight, people are gonna be able to understand the conversation that the school committee had on a number of interesting issues. And those who have been doing it a little bit longer, that we now have students who are doing some of the filming and some of the production and things like that. And so, and you can piggyback, so for instance, on, you know, it's a Sunday school. Just to remember what day, you look on Sundays and you can see all the school programs over the week. You don't have to wait, is it eight o'clock, six o'clock? It's right here on Sundays all day long for you. So I think this is a great start. And I think it's a, it's a matter of figuring out what people in the community are turning on to and taking advantage of that. And I think, I think it's a great idea. The only other point I'd like to add, if you don't mind, Betsy, is, and I think sometimes we underestimate our graduates from West giving us good feedback as well. And I'm sure that Mary Beth, she's well-respected amongst all of her peers. They could set up a time, maybe at the middle school, and meet with some of the West students and ask them for some feedback. Or you wanna do that? It's about our students, right?
So it seems like then, Martha and I, we should probably have a follow-up meeting to decide on some of these ideas. Not to give you a homework assignment, but I'm just looking at this. And I'm wondering if we, if you could maybe, or if you want me to somehow revise it to, instead of being that purpose to talk about the forum, and then, again, listing things. So that might be a nice cover letter. And then if we have the questions, our questions, right? So then this becomes another vehicle that can go out in the community. Martha and I can decide how and when to disseminate. But that might be nice, you know, if we deliver it to Dr. Mingpoff. You know, is there a time where kids can get together to have a conversation and submit that to us, to the finance, to the, you know, stop by the town hall? So would that be okay to ask of you?
Absolutely. What means you like it?
Well, Martha, what are we gonna be... Could you get it to me by the morning? Do you wanna take a week or do you need more? Please be honest.
Yeah, I think it's on by Friday.
What's coming up? Before I'm cast, probably, right?
Don't worry about Friday. I'm gonna be in North Hampton until Saturday. By Monday.
By the end of next week, how about that?
By the end of next week.
Because I know us, we'll probably meet on the Sunday.
We'll meet. And we may be able to just have a communication via email or text or something. Okay. So I wanna wrap up this discussion. Thanks to everybody.
I do have one other thing to say.
I'm sorry, I'm the chair. I said wrapping up. My first time, everybody.
What's after this?
Your, all right, the agenda. Public forum, further act.
In portion of information.
If I could do the strategic planning, I could way right into that with what I'm about to say.
Are you pulling for an agenda?
No. Well, let me just say this, that in April... Trying to behave over here. In April, the strategic planning committee will be going out in subcommittees and getting information from the educators, from other school committees and members, and also from community members. And we have not yet figured out what that's going to be. So we may wanna wait before we go running off to reinvent the wheel, see what that committee comes up with and if it's something that is a really good follow-up to this or not.
Okay, so we can do that in our meeting. We can decide that.
And I don't think we'll know that by...
Right, well, we can get the format prepared. And then you and I can discuss what next steps. Okay, great. So Jill, are you ready to present on Cape Cod collaborative?
Yes, just a few highlights. There's a position open, although by now it perhaps could be filled. Then there's a meeting tomorrow. There was a meeting with the collaborative on February 13. And there's a position, a new position called Operations Manager, since the roles of the collaborative have expanded so much, whether it's transportation or other things. But transportation has been really a big expansion, huge. More and more school systems are either making an inquiry for transportation or some have now joined the transportation fleet. So there's a new position called Operations Manager that they sorely need. And at the moment, I don't think it's been decided and filmed yet. All right? There's going to be an increase for staff. As most of you know, the Cape Cod collaborative teachers are not on, are not unionized and they don't have salary schedules. So when it's appropriate and on a timely basis, then there's a subcommittee that looks into it, what is fair, what is feasible. And then the whole board votes on it. So there has been a 2% increase for staff at the collaborative. And a little bit of a bump on rates for special therapists, like occupational therapists, speech therapists, physical therapists. It escapes me at the moment. But a teacher went, did a grant for Cape Cod V and got a grant for this sea mural. a grant for this sea mural.
Oh, for what?
S-E-A mural, painting, a mural in the facility. So that was pretty exciting. Oh, of course, there's already planning for the Leadership Academy that's at the Mass Maritime, and there have been 254 students that have applied across the Cape to take advantage of this leadership program. And there's only 208 openings. So, there, sometimes is a natural attrition where people are interested, and then they battle out for various reasons. So, there's the sense that perhaps people are going to get in there that want to be there, and to be announced. With D Y, there's a student exchange program with China, and there's been a bump in it. Apparently, the American Embassy in Beijing has been giving potential students coming over here a very challenging time to get visas to come over here. So at the moment, that's kind of being on standby. Maybe by now it has been worked out. So, those are the highlights.
Thank you. Any questions for Jill? Preschool enrollment?
It's in there.
We have those numbers. Anybody have questions that... All right, moving on, we have PTA, which we had not reported at last meeting, and then we didn't have a meeting that night, so we do have a meeting tonight, and I will report on that at our next meeting.
I have a question. Do you know what the date is of the speaking agenda? Because I heard it was...
April 6th.
Of what?
I think it's April 6th.
It's in the minutes, I think.
April 5th.
Of what?
spaghetti supper.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, you're sent up.
Yeah, I know.
You're bussing.
Can I say that?
No. You have to sign up.
Want me to put your name? We can bring your name up tonight.
Would you, as a...
Let's, let's put her on. Just kidding.
But we won't have Jill as, as waitress this time.
No, first time in a couple decades.
Dishwasher.
No. I can wait until...
Okay.
Good.
Or host? Would you, do you like hosting?
I love going to the table.
Sometimes they need...
I can host this.
So hostess or...
We need a waitress because Jill can't do it. We need a waitress.
Are we in plenty?
That's what she said. Okay. Well, we'll bring it up to see what they need. And if it's dishwasher, then so it is. I'm just saying. Just kidding. Okay. Substance abuse task force?
We, Matt, we are, we found ourselves tweaking questions so much at our last meeting that we decided to put it away. We're done. Because the more we read over, the more things we wanted to change. So I think we are set with a pretty good set of questions for the next survey, which should happen hopefully this spring to give us more information. I think I reported last time that there were questions added about vaping. One other thing that came up in that is, there were no questions about how to support or how to find out how many kids are affected by either, don't have, or substance abuse issues in their families. Because one thing we should be thinking about is how to support those kids who are dealing with it at home, not as users themselves, and not as, as clients themselves, but as kids who are shouldering a lot. So that's something that we've thought about adding to our question. Unfortunately, I had to leave a little early because it's, I had to go next door to another meeting, but the strategic planning meeting was scheduled to start at 4:30. And I had to leave before I found out when our next meeting is or what the decision was about that question.
And you did give your strategic plan report, or do you have anything else to say on that?
That's it. We really have been working on the surveys.
Okay.
So, that's about it. And we're ready to go.
All right. And just a comment, the policy committee will likely be meeting on March 28th, so I should have a report for next week.
I look forward to that.
Yes. Homework policy, I think. Minutes, do we, do we have any?
Look, we approve the minutes.
I wanted to correct one error, please.
Yes.
Page two, under Principals Report. The third sentence, "At Wellfleet Elementary, there are 16 students who have or will be going on extended vacations." It says between two and three weeks, and it was two weeks or more, really.
Okay.
And I actually haven't given the strategic planning report.
That's why I just asked you.
It's just me.
Okay. I said, "Did you have anything else for your strategic plan report?" And you said, "No, just the survey."
Oh, I thought you, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I thought it was the other report.
Okay, so we'll back up a second. That's all right.
You're on that side hearing on. I can hear Tom, but the rest of you forget.
All right.
What we have been working on, we've been meeting, I think we've had four or five meetings already. We meet at least twice a month, and it's been, just a personal statement is that it's been an incredible experience for me. I am reading all kinds of books about educational reform and all kinds of articles. Maxine is our chair, and she's continually sending out things for us to read. I feel like I'm in a graduate course. And I love it. I mean, I really love it. I whine about it, but I am loving the experience. The people are, on the committee are very, very bright and very interesting. We each were assigned a small, I think mine was a page long, most people did a paragraph or two, some people did more, topics that we had identified as hot topics for what we are talking about. And what they were, basically, were mobile citizenship, sustainability, serving the whole child through social, emotional learning and school culture, technology and using it as a tool, professional development, schools as centers of learning, 21st century skills and basic living skills for all students. We've worked on the definitions of those and expanded some and made some shorter, but what we did was, many of us developed a small piece of writing to be able to use as a draft for talking points as we go out into the community and begin to find out what people want. So, and yesterday at our meeting, we spent a good part of the meeting re-reading these and editing them and adding ideas to them as we went along. That's where we are. It's really interesting doing the researching for this.
I can see how it's going to come together.
It really is. Yeah, it's very exciting. I think it's going to be an incredibly meaningful and relevant document once we get it done.
Thank you for working on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We need it.
Okay. Any other corrections to the minutes?
I just, not about the minutes.
Oh, yeah. Do you want to say something?
I just want to add, the March 26th date is, what are we having that day?
That's, that's when I'm meeting with the selectmen.
With the selectmen?
Yeah.
That's COA.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's all right.
And we should be done.
We'd like to, yeah. It's going to be, I hope, part of the conversation.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second. Okay. And bills will be paid this evening by yours truly, and motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
A second.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.